All right, we're just a few seconds to one o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started with our first meeting of the year, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is election of officers. I will open the floor.
I'd like to nominate Rob Schuman to be president of the Commissioners Board.
Second?
And Teresa to be vice.
I think they have to separate now.
They do. So I'm just gonna say one thing, that you guys had a lot of conversations behind closed doors without me, including switching our board appointments, and I do not appreciate it. So I will close elections. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Second thing on the agenda, oh no, I'm sorry, I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Teresa Basinger for vice chair.
I'll second that.
I decline the nomination.
Okay, are there any further nominations? I'll nominate Stacy Petrovis for vice chair.
I'll second it.
Any further nominations? Seeing none, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Stacy's vice chair, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the 2026 Board Appointments and Assignments. And there are some boards that all three commissioners sit on, some that we divide to spread out the workload. And so for myself, Rob Schuman, for 2026, I'll be on the Board of Finance, the Solid Waste Board, which those are the two that all three of us sit on, the EDC Investment Board, the Joint Advisory Board, the Drainage Board, the Emergency Management Agency Board, and the Mayors and Commissioners Caucus. Stacy Petrovis will be on the Board of Finance and the Solid Waste Board, along with the Plan Commission, the Regional Sewer District, and the Historical Committee for the Museum. Teresa Basinger will be on the Board of Finance and the Solid Waste Board, the EMS. She will have the Redevelopment Commission, Community Corrections, and the Region 3A. Next on our agenda is Human Resources Director Jennifer Schenberry with Policy Manual Amendments.
Are we keeping the redevelopment members?
The other members.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you need to hold on that.
Oh, okay. I'll entertain a motion to reappoint the RDC members.
I move that we reappoint the RDC members.
Sir, for a second.
It's been moved. And second, did we reappoint the RDC members? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor?
I have further discussion.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so again, as I had indicated at the beginning of the meeting, there were some conversations. So we had all sat down as a board and decided who would get what appointments, and then it changed, and I found out about 15 minutes ago. Again, let's not do that again. I think it's really portase to do that. I had indicated that I would have liked Drainage Board, and since Stacy's brand new, I thought it was a great idea to have him on that because it's extremely important. Rob, I know, right after Commissioner Banks had passed away, I had indicated that you'd been on it for a couple of years, that I would like it, and you told me because I wasn't a farmer that I shouldn't be on it. And I just don't think that that's true at all, because I absolutely understand how important drainage is in Woodley County. And I'm going to come to the next Drainage Board meeting and ask every one of the board members here if I did a good job. And they will all say I did a wonderful job, and I don't appreciate it at all.
That meeting that we did the board assignments, Stacy being a new commissioner, you had pushed to have him on the Plan Commission and the Drainage Board, which are the two.
I'm not here to argue with you. You guys did that behind my back. You know what you were doing. You know exactly what you were doing. And you're not being sneaky about it at all.
No, we're absolutely not being sneaky at all.
Okay, you think that I don't understand and see what you're doing? I absolutely see what you're doing. There's nothing else to talk about. And Stacy's new, and you took advantage of that, too, to make it like it was no big deal.
No, that's not, that's not accurate. Stacy being new, you tried to push the two most time-consuming boards onto him, and then you got up and left without discussion.
Two times.
And this has been, we've talked about this.
It's two things a month. Redevelopment Commission is one board, and that's two times a month. And then we also have other, and we can go back and forth all day. Not true at all. That's not true at all.
The Plan Commission meets in the evenings, and those meetings can go as late as 11:00 PM.
And he was more than excited. And then you went, and then you said, oh, you've got too much on your plate. I'll take that for you.
I left it up to him, and he wanted to do the Plan Commission, and I said, I'll take the one you don't want.
Okay.
You weren't here, or you would have known that.
Yeah, because I was on vacation for the one week, and there are many times
No, you left, you left.
That you miss things because you're out doing other things, your other job. So, and sometimes we all, I missed one check-in meeting. I apologize that you guys have to see this. I just want everyone to know what's going on.
There's nothing going on. If you were here more, you would know that.
Yeah, I'm here quite often. Just because I'm not here when you're here, and when you advertise your hours.
Teresa, this is not the time or the place.
Okay.
Anyway, back to the agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Now, with further discussion is complete, we'll proceed to vote on the motion of reappointing the RDC members. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
So I have just a few policy amendment changes. Most of them are just cleaning some things up that have come up in the most recent years, just clarification for clerical errors. But the major amendments had to do with adjusting the overtime policies related to the mayor officers going to 12-hour shifts, to adjust that to a 14-day work period. So those were the major amendments. But you have before you just a three-page document that has redlined amendments there, if you have any questions. But we did review this in our meetings a couple of times, I believe, and I reviewed it with Andy's coworker, Carrie. Just discussed it with her even today on the phone, and she didn't have any issues with any of the amendments, so.
Would you like to move forward?
I would like for the amendments to be approved.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I move that we approve the amendment.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the amendments, the personnel manual as presented, please signify by raising your right hand. Next on the agenda is Cindy Doolittle, clerk with the Lake City Bank contract.
Okay, I believe it was emailed to you, the contract?
Yes.
Did you look at the contract?
I did, yes.
And everything, Cindy?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, I'm just asking for approval. Every year, they will give us a contract, and then the dollar amount is 300 a month for the account charge. But we had went to other banks, but they were so much higher. So with this, it's for the positive pay system, which we have stopped thousands of checks being fraudulent, fraudulent checks, so I don't know if you guys have, you have more to sign.
Yeah.
I would move to approve.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the contract with Lake City Bank as presented, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries.
Even if I could just get a copy of that today.
Next item on our agenda is the Veteran Services Officer Josh Smith with his monthly update.
Good afternoon. A little paperwork here. So kind of the yearly roundup from last year, ended up at 511 veterans that came through in total of all of last year. As far as appointments, walk-ins, calls, it's averaged out over the entire year, about 53% of walk-ins. And then a 26 appointments and 20% of calls that would come through. So obviously, it being full-time, open all the time, it actually, you know, proved to be a very resource, you know, very good resource for the veterans of the community. They can just stop in, ask questions, get things done, you know, whatever they needed to do. And have it kind of broke down by the quarters and everything like that. I'm not really too worried. I just kind of wanted to see when the busy time was, and, you know, it was around that second quarter of the year that it got a little bit busier, but that all can change. So I want to kind of keep track of that over the next few years, just to kind of have an idea of maybe if there's a better, you know, a time that gets a little bit more busy and everything like that. Other than that, business as usual. Looking forward to a good year this year. Get out to more of the first Fridays again, out to more events. Still doing the Indian Springs quarterly talk that I have with their eighth graders, which that's been, been really good. Got some postcards from some of the kids from the last one. So that was really neat. Other than that, unless you guys got any questions, we're already starting off pretty strong, first day working back after the New Year, so.
Well, it was two years ago this week that I just saw in my, actually, on my Facebook memories that Commissioner Banks had posted that we went to the Personnel Committee and asked to make your position full-time because there was a significant need from scheduling and support of the veterans in the county. And so Josh has been here just a little under two years.
Right.
And again, anyone that's watching this meeting or is here that isn't aware, if you have a family member or yourself, and you need help with paperwork or contacting someone at the VA, that's what Josh is here for. He's a tremendous resource. He's a veteran himself, so he knows exactly what you're going through. And it's just been a great fit having him here, and we're thrilled to death for all the positive work he's done and will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is Health Director Scott Wagner with the Part View Grant Fund Creation.
Each of you have a copy of that?
Yes.
Afternoon. I did notice I will need to, after the meeting, go and change that on there.
Oh, on the main page?
And I'll need to bring that back in, if you'll hold on a rundown or get that changed real quick. We are receiving a grant from Part View. This is the first time we received a grant from them, so we don't have an existing fund to put the money in there. So if you would be so kind to approve the ordinance for the fund, be used for Darcy's evening classes starting in February, will be this year at the Senior Center instead of the library. They're gonna be open in the evenings. Thought that'd be a good place to have that there. We won't be crunched for time in that location. So she's gonna have those starting in February, should go through November again, and it'll be very exciting for our ladies to attend those meetings. Any other questions for me?
How much is the grant?
$3,000. We have yet to receive that, but once we do, we'll have it put in. I'll be going to the council tomorrow to have that fund appropriated, so when the money is deposited, then we can go ahead and spend that. Actually, that's February's meeting, I think.
And this will be ordinance 2026 dash zero one. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve this as written.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving ordinance 2026 dash zero one as presented, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Some exciting news. Next Monday, Emily Banks will be starting with, as the American Heart Association intern for Woodley County, and Chad's daughter will be starting there, so she'll be in the building and do some exciting things.
That's awesome. Next item on the agenda is Emergency Management Agency Director Ed Scott with his end-of-year report.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Believe you guys got the report already?
Yep.
One of the things we're trying to do is to show, as many of you know, we're pretty busy, but this allows us to give a review of what we've done last year, what we've accomplished, what we haven't finished that we wanted to, and to look forward to the coming year and how we can do better, or what we can focus on. So over the 2025 year in glance, we had a budget of 139,546. We brought in $66,000 worth of grant money, whether that was from our reimbursement from FEMA for our salary, or various grants for different items. Those numbers looked pretty good to me. I mean, that's 48% of our budget back from what's invested in our department. So while that probably is not going to look that way in the coming years, it was good to see, at least. We've adopted our 2026 budget and look forward to seeing how we can bring back that. Over the year, we responded over 20 calls, mainly outside of business hours. On there, it shows the difference. I think there was only four that were during the business hours, and the rest were either on the weekends, holidays, or in the evenings, because, you know, disasters and emergencies never happen at 72 degrees on a Tuesday at 2:00 PM when we want to get out of the office. Our biggest, of course, is severe weather. We continue that. In fact, this year, we broke a record. We had a tornado activation on the end of December, which I believe was our National Weather Service first one of issuing. So throughout the year, we've had over 340 hours of training combined between Brandon and I, multiple full skills and tabletop exercises that we've participated, hosted, or supported, and participated in both state and national emergency management conferences. We've had a dozen or so community outreach events, safety trainings, public education sessions, worked with the schools on evacuation and communication planning, and supported all, most, if not all, the major events in the community, from the fairs, the festivals, marathons, everything that goes on outdoor-wise. For our county readiness, we continue to work on, and we've started working on all of our plans to get them updated, whether it's as small as an annex, or if it's a large, like our comprehensive emergency management plan. We've helped with the early warning siren monitoring that Columbia City does. We added a UAS program, which already had two incidents this year. And we actually did a full overhaul on LAPC's hazmat emergency response plan, that from front to end. Normally, that gets updated just by our Tier 2 facilities, but this year, the entire thing from front to back got finished, which was a really good accomplishment, and took a lot of work on that. Looking ahead to 2026, we want to increase our engagement in all of our communities, as small as, no matter how small they are, whether it's just a couple houses, or if it's the city of Columbia City, we want to make sure we're involved in all of that. Research of the possibilities of OAS and COAS, which is volunteer and community outreach programs that can be helpful of bringing businesses and volunteer organizations together. As we see force and look forward to funds being tighter and coming together, we might need to look at some local avenues of how we can be more resilient as a county than relying on outside the county. I want to complete the update of the comprehensive emergency management plan, expand our training for responders, county staff, and the public, look at how we can improve our early warning systems in the county, and then enhance the safety measures in all of our county facilities, which we've been heavily into, especially with a lot of the moving that's occurred this last year. We continue to be involved in that, so we look forward to that. And of course, always looking for other suggestions on what you'd like for us to do.
Looks like you had a very busy year, and already started. I know I saw, I don't know if it was a conference call, or what was the, maybe it was just an email from FEMA, and part of that was the value of EMA, and I think I-
Yeah, sent that out last month.
Yeah, and I think I either texted you or emailed you, and, you know, it referred to EMA directors like Ed, or the deputies Brandon is run toward danger, or the thing I specifically remember is the calm in the storm. And I know personally, the night we lost Commissioner Banks, one of the first people that I thought of was, you know, when I asked the sheriff out here in the parking lot, I said, has anybody talked to Ed Scott? I called Ed, he said, I'm pulling in right now. And it was just, it was a surreal moment, but it was just, it showed the value of somebody like Ed, and, you know. And then on a personal note, Ed has stepped in to help with a lot of IT things here in the county that it's a strength he has as a person. He's knowledgeable and gifted in that area, and it's something he's interested in. And so I would like to publicly thank Ed for all that he takes on beyond the scope of his already full-time plus job. Thank you for all you do and that you will do. It's very appreciated.
Thank you. I've had a good predecessor that led me the way, and had an excellent deputy now, so we're able to do a lot of this together as a team and keep moving forward, so.
That's true. Ed's predecessor was one of the most respected people in county government since I've been around in several years here, and he had big shoes to fill, and he has admirably stepped up to the plate and done that.
I'm getting that. I'm getting that.
Thank you.
And then if you have any questions outside of this, just feel free. We're office always open, always long. You got my number. Text me, call me, whatever you need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Planning Director Nathan Belger with several plat approvals is next.
Good afternoon. Just have two. Both of them were heard at the November Plan Commission meeting, and between when the Myers got to us and the holidays, didn't, weren't able to get them on the agenda for you guys until this meeting. So the first one I have here is the Myers subdivision. It's a two-lot subdivision. The Myers are basically splitting their house off of the rest of the acreage so that they can sell that for development. It's down on 300 West. I can't think of anything remarkable about it. So any questions on it?
Would you like to move forward with Myers subdivision?
What meant to approve?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving Myers subdivision as presented, please signify by raising your right hand.
Thank you. And then the second one is Wagner subdivision, section two. This one is somewhat unusual in that it needed to have a rezoning. You might recall that from a couple months ago, because this would create the second, and, well, it would create the third lot off of the parent tract from 2018, which triggers the need for rezoning. But other than that, pretty standard, 80,000 square foot lots down in Jefferson Township. Also, if you look at this, this still has Chad's name on it. As you know, just scratch that off if you do move to accept this.
Would you like to move forward with Wagner subdivision, section two?
I move that we approve it.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving Wagner subdivision as presented, please signify by raising your right hand. That motion carries.
Thank you. I'll leave these for after the meeting.
Thank you, Nathan. We had a late addition to the agenda. County Engineer Brad Allen has a couple of things that we need to discuss.
Hello. Thanks for fitting me in last minute. So for today are two contracts for the same project. It is the Grand White Striping Project, which is an Endot grant project. So the two contracts today are, one is between us and the consultant that will be doing the construction engineering or inspection, and the second contract is between us and Endot. Both of them are standard Endot templates with, fill in the blanks mostly, but for project specific, specific information. Both of these need to be approved by the letting date, which is January 14. And so, again, sorry for the late notice and the short turnaround. And I think that Andy's been given one, but not the other one since I just got it today.
I see the Striping one. I mean, the consultant one.
The consultant one, okay.
Yeah, I didn't see the Endot one, I think. Or maybe it's the other way around.
I think it's the other way around, so. And I can send you the consultant one now.
So we can approve those in contingent on Andy's review?
I move that we approve those on contingent on Andy's review.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? See, go ahead.
I, we will need to address the Endot DocuSign approving authority, since we just made it Teresa. But we should be able to use that.
She could still probably do it, couldn't she? I don't know. It matters.
Well, it was given to her by names instead of being the chair. So if it was the chair, we would have to get your information to Endot.
Okay. We can adjust that. Is there any further discussion on either matter? Seeing none, all proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the two contracts as presented, please signify by raising your right hand. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad. Next on the agenda is Payroll and Accounts Payable, Claims and Approval.
I was in Friday and looked at payroll and accounts payable. They were all in order. I would move to approve payroll.
I second it.
All in favor of approving payroll, please signify by raising your right hand. That motion carries.
I would also move to approve accounts payable.
I'll second that.
All in favor of approving accounts payable as presented, please signify by raising your right hand. That motion carries as well. That motion carries as well. Next up is a previous meeting minutes approval. Has everyone had a chance to look through the minutes from the December 15, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the minutes from the December 15, 2025 Whitley County Board of Commissioners meeting as presented? Please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. This time, we will open the floor for public comment. If anyone here would like to speak, we welcome you to come forward to introduce yourself, and we'll afford you three minutes.
Jennifer Esterline. I have a simple request. I need a public record request regarding a meeting that the commissioners had with a BZA member in November. I do believe it's common, it's not common practice to have a meeting. Andy, you probably know more about this, especially when the meeting was requested just to have two of the commissioners, not all three, at the meeting. But I do know it needs to be documented and recorded, and I would like a copy of that. And usually, after the meeting, it has 10 days to be recorded, so it should be already recorded. And I can wait for that, or if you need that in writing, I can.
I'm not familiar with the meeting you're talking about, so.
Yeah, I do believe.
So what Jennifer Esterline is referring to, a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals had reached out and requested a meeting with Commissioner Petrovis and myself. After a commissioners' meeting, we walked over and had a brief conversation. It was nothing formal.
Well, if it's more than one commissioner, and, but not all three, that's usually not how it goes.
Well, it's pretty common to have members of the public or folks asked to meet or have questions and things, and so.
But it has to be recorded if there's more than one commissioner, and it's with a BZA member, and it wasn't in an executive meeting.
And maybe the thing to do would be, if you could submit that in writing?
Sure.
And then we could look at the request and give you a formal response.
Yeah, I just need the date and topics covered. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Andy, do you have anything to add?
No.
Tiffany? Commissioner Petrovis? Commissioner Basinger?
No.
Then we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you for coming.